Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square. And welcome everyone here today. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I got a text from Commissioner Cameron about seven o'clock this morning that he's speaking in Silverton, I think at eight. And so he'll be driving back. So he's not here right now, but he will be back momentarily. So we, our agenda starts with public comment. And we have a lot of people here, but it looks like, are there three spokespersons that want to come up? I'm looking at the signup sheet. Is that correct? Let me read it. Jamie Nannitz, is that correct?
Namitz.
Namitz, okay. And Mercedes Luley. And Diana Downs. You with the group too? Okay, did you want to come over here and speak? You can pull up a third chair if you would like. Make sure you speak into a microphone so that the CCTV audience can also hear. Otherwise, we can hear in the room, but they can't hear on Facebook and also on CCTV.
Hello and good morning. My name is Jamie Namitz. I've worked in Marion County for 16 years. I'm a victim of sexual discrimination, discriminated treatment, and desperate treatment and harassment in Marion County Public Works. Today I stand before you to tell the citizens of Marion County that I will not tolerate being treated or mistreated. On August 15th, I applied for a Operations Road Supervisor position within Marion County Public Works. During this interview, I was asked questions that pertained to the job and my skillsets. At the end of the interview, I gave, gave me time to ask questions of my interview team. I asked three questions. The first question was, what are some of my skillsets? Or what are some of the important skillsets you are looking for in this position? The other one was, what is the most rewarding and most challenging part of your job? I was asking this to a fellow supervisor. And then my third question was, what do you feel my strengths and weaknesses are in relation to this position? And I asked that of my department manager, Dawn Newell. And this is where the discrimination reared its ugly head. He told me my biggest weakness was that he didn't feel my crew would respect me as a supervisor. He didn't want to have to tell them for two years why he would have given me this position. And then he proceeded to tell me my biggest strength was my sexuality. And this was the end of my interview. No one said any words after that. I left the table shocked and appalled. Over the past month, Alan Haley worked with John Latimer to see if they could keep Dawn in his position. They decided to go against HR's recommendation of termination, keeping him as my department head, keeping me in a hostile work environment, sealing my fate to never be promoted. I cannot tell you how long this behavior has been going on. But some of the findings were two times I was passed over, possibly more. Dawn's plan is to place men where he wants them. We call it Dawn's Plan. I am here to put a stop to this behavior, to be the voice for future women at Marion County Public Works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and sharing your story. Mercedes? Right up here.
Hi, everyone. My name's Mercedes Luley. Jamie's my sister. I think that you probably got enough information from her on what has been happening. I've been standing by her side over the past few weeks, supporting her, and really stewing over this whole thing, wondering what was going to happen. And I was pretty excited to hear that Human Resources sustained all of these allegations against Dawn and that they were recommending termination. And then I was immediately, I would say, crushed, disappointed, pissed off. Quite a few feelings that it's apparently acceptable for the supervisors, the higher-ups, to disregard Marion County's policy that they readily and happily hold their employees to. They use those policies and procedures to keep everyone in line. But when it's applied to, well, I would say maybe the good old boys, it isn't applied to the good old boys. So now we have John Latimer and Alan Haley, who completely disregarded Human Resources' recommendation for termination. There was also a secondary recommendation for a last chance, which they took away upon realizing that they were going to keep him in place. So now Jamie, my sister, who works her butt off, she is a person who doesn't question what's happening as far as work. She's there, she works long hours, she works hard, it's physical labor, and she doesn't complain. And she has the love and support of every single person on her crew and beyond. That was definitely found during the three-week investigation that Human Resources did. They interviewed over 30 people. Nine more people came through with allegations against Dawn Newell during that investigation. And that was all cast aside. And I'm like really disappointed in that. And I know right now Marion County has 29 positions open, ranging from, they need a, someone at the dog shelter to run the dog shelter, all the way to IT and planners, a variety of positions. And my question is, if Marion County allows discrimination, they allow their employees to be in a hostile work environment, how do you, how do you expect to fill those positions, recruit for those positions? And what are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about the discrimination that's happening? Because I'm, I understand that this kind of comes down to you. You guys are the ones, and maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but I believe as the elected officials, you get to, you know, add your input and make changes if you see they're necessary. And I, I have a, I have something here that I'd like to read. I'm not really sure where to start. I think I'm just going to jump into the good spot. The pledge is, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." It's a simple but critical message highlighted today by the national discussion about Me Too, hashtag Me Too. I'm sure some of you have seen it. We now have a hashtag Marion County Too. And the next part of the email I'd like to read is, "Our county services deal daily with people who have been victimized and ha, or have perpetuated violence or harassment, or have tried to harm themselves, especially in our county jail, juvenile, parole, probation, prosecution, and mental health programs. Yet violence, harassment, and self-harm are not limited to those we serve. Marion County has a strong policy on expectations for appropriate conduct in the workplace." And there's a link here to that. "I want to assure you that as county commissioners, we take these matters very seriously. Workplace violence and sexual or any type of harassment are not okay, period. If you are experiencing such a situation in the workplace, please report it to your supervisor or Human Resources. If you are experiencing violence or harassment personally, the Center for Hope and Safety and our own District Attorney's Office have advocates and resources to help guide you through the process. Let's focus during the month of October on how we can make Marion County, our homes, our communities safer, kinder places by always remembering this simple promise: I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." So what I'm asking of you all is for you to put your money where your mouth is and make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more person signed up. Diana Downs. Good morning.
Good morning. Let me introduce myself. My name is Diana Downs. I'm a resident of Marion County, an employee of Marion County. I'm an officer and steward of MCEA, and I am a woman. I can't begin to tell you how inspired I am by the courage and bravery shown by Jamie this morning. She has put herself in the spotlight in order to bring you a first-person account of what is happening within Marion County, the county that you all lead. To say that it makes me sick to my stomach and makes my heart hurt is an understatement. But this isn't about me. But wait, it is about me. It's about me and every other female employee of Marion County. This isn't about a situation that occurred 30 years ago. This isn't an isolated incident. This is a situation that occurs last year, last month, yesterday, and even worse, these incidents are happening as we're speaking. Tomorrow, next week, next month, next year. This is about a culture that denies women equal opportunity and the resulting equal pay expectations. This is about a culture that allows women to be discriminated against. This is about a culture that allows women to be objectified and humiliated. This is about a culture that allows these actions to continue. And this culture exists within the halls of Marion County. Mr. Cameron, you visited a meet and greet opportunity and gave us reason to believe that you support the employees of Marion County, not just the men, but the women as well. Here is your opportunity to put these actions to words. Please don't allow your comments to lay as campaign rhetoric. Mr. Bertano, I don't know whether enough, know you well enough to know whether you have children, but what if you did? What if you had daughters? What if your daughter was not allowed the opportunity to apply for a promotion and by such action was not allowed and given the opportunity to better herself? What if your daughter was being told to go work in the office because men should be working in the field? What if it was your daughter that was being sexually harassed in the workplace? Ms. Carlson, I have admired your amazing work on behalf of the homeless community in Marion County. You have worked tirelessly to better their position in life. I read your message from the chair this morning with interest. But reporting situations isn't enough. Neither is investigating the allegations enough. There have to be consequences to these situations. Your female employees need your help and your leadership, and they need it now. As you said in your message from the chair, are you walking the walk or are you talking the talk? I enjoy being a member of MCEA SEIU. I enjoy the situations that allow me to bridge the gap between management and labor. It gives us the opportunity to make Marion County a success on all levels. However, this isn't a union issue. This isn't a female issue. This is a safety issue. To be blunt, the women that work for Marion County are not safe. We are not safe from harassment, we are not safe from discrimination, and we are not safe from objectification, and we're not safe from humiliation. And let's be honest, it's not just women. Men are affected in this situation as well. They're being made to choose which side of the line to stand. There shouldn't even be a question of which line to stand. Members of the board, I challenge you this morning. Take control. Make a difference. Decide whether you're going to allow the problem of harassment and discrimination to continue, or whether you're going to stand with your employees you lead and the constituitions of the county you serve. And let it be known that these actions will not be tolerated. Please, take action. It's time to talk the talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the group who wanted to speak? Generally, we don't give two bites of the apple. Is it quick? All right, come on back.
I'm clearly not very observant, but I just noticed you are John Latimer sitting there. Yes, nice to meet you, John. I'm Mercedes, I'm Jamie's sister. May I ask you a pointed question?
We don't, we don't allow back and forth from this. This is public comment.
Okay, well.
So you make your comments and...
I'm super disappointed in how this has been handled. I just want you to know that. It's disgusting.
Thank you. So anyone else from the group that wanted to speak? All right, is there anyone else who signed up for public comment? I mean, that didn't sign up because these are the only three on the list that wanted to come up on any other topic? All right, let me just make, as I mentioned, public comment is an opportunity for anyone, employees, people from the public, to come in and let the commissioners know what's on their mind. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. It can be on the agenda, except for land use, because there's legal rules around that. So we appreciate all of you coming today and the passion that you have about this issue and the concern. We don't, in a public forum, generally want to talk about personnel issues. There are privacy rights and parameters around that, and so you need to understand that. So I'm going to speak in very general terms. But I wanted to tell you, first of all, that I agree with you, that you, that sexual harassment, discrimination, violence in the workplace cannot be tolerated in Marion County. And what I wrote yesterday, I didn't write because I knew you were coming today. I actually left for a week and was babysitting my grandson down in Idaho and Austin, I mean, in Dallas, Texas, and had those purple gloves sitting next to my desk and was going to write about Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting. So, because it is that month and I thought it would be appropriate. And there's been a national conversation, as I'm sure anybody who's watched anything online has, is aware of. However, I just need you to know that there are processes in Marion County. And I'm sure that some of you have heard that the process is moving forward in terms of getting a different resolution to the issue that you're talking about. If someone reports, you need to have confidence that it's going to be followed up on. If there are issues going on in a department, you need to have confidence that your Board of Commissioners cares, that we will not tolerate it, that we will take every action necessary to make sure that that culture and that situation changes. So I give you my commitment on that today. I believe my fellow commissioners are on board with that as well. We, there is just, as I mentioned in the thing, there is, it's not okay, period. There's no discussion, no excuses, right? And so that is our position. And we will support you in moving forward with a resolution to this specific issue and to the issues that you're talking about in general. And that's about as much as I can say from here in public. But again, I want to thank you for being here and taking the time to come down. And the bravery of the women that came up and spoke, I want to thank you for that. And I can't think of anything else that I can say right now. So we're going to continue on with our meeting. If you would like to join us, you're welcome to do that. Okay, Commissioner Bertano?
Well, I can't just sit here quiet. I just will, I'll second your thoughts. I agree with you. There's personnel issues and processes I don't want to interfere with. But I do agree, and we will get to the bottom.
Anything you want to say?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for coming forward and being brave and sharing your story. And I do have two daughters and, and...
Oh yeah, I do too.
Yeah, he's got lots of kids.
Yeah, you've got more than I do, right? But, and I take this very serious. And as a businessperson in the past, I've always taken this very serious. And we will follow up and make sure that your words have not just stopped.
We're talking, we're walking the walk, not just talking the talk. All right. So thank you all. We're going to do a flu shot demonstration now. The Health Department is here. So we will move from public comment to our presentation today. Diana Dickey, thank you for being here and participating. And we do encourage everyone to get your flu shots too.
All right, thank you so much for having us. Again, this is our annual reminder that everyone six months and older should receive a flu shot. I brought Ryan Flett, he's one of our immunization nurses today. And so he's going to be administering shots to a few of you who have agreed to get your shot during the meeting this morning. I also just wanted to point out, I left on your desks a flyer. One side talks about, this is, 2018 is the 100-year anniversary of the flu pandemic of 1918, that over 500 million people got the flu that year. That was long before we had flu shots, where we had vaccines for flu or better ways to treat complications of the flu. So we've come a long way since then, and it, the paper shows some of the milestones we've had, including developing a vaccine for flu. But it does come around every year, and so you do need to get a shot every year. On the other side, it just talks a little bit about what the flu is. It's very contagious, it's not a bacteria. The flu itself can't be treated with antibiotics, and our best protection is to get an annual flu shot. Another thing we always want to remind people is that there are a lot of places to get your flu shot. You can get them from your healthcare provider, place of work, pharmacies. Most pharmacies carry flu shots. We have them at the Health Department. Sometimes there are clinics out in the community, so there's, we have no shortage of flu shots this year, lots of opportunities. The other thing is, this year, they're bringing back the flu mist, which is an intranasal flu shot for people who qualify. So sometimes people who are a little bit needle-averse, that works well for them as well. So some of the pharmacies and healthcare providers will start having that. And it's not too early to get your shot now, and it's not too late. If you don't happen to have your opportunity now and you, it's, you know, February 1st, go ahead and get your flu shot if you haven't had it by then. Last year, flu season peaked around, a little bit in November, and then it peaked again around February, March. So we have it all the way through the year. All right, so I'll ask Ryan to come on up and...
So Diana, can I ask you a question? Am I still too old to get the mist? I mean, do they still have an age limit on it?
Yeah, the mist is, yeah, age two to 49. And there, and if you have like asthma or other health, health conditions, you can't get it. So it's a pretty limited group, but it's an option for people.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Am I supposed to go down there? They're going to come up here?
Come on down. Yeah, it's easier. We have all the supplies down here.
I might as well take my coat off.
Does he get the old guy dosage? I want to know that.
Yeah.
I still get the sniffer.
Do you?
Yeah, you know, 49.
Oh, come on. You can't cheat like that.
Another thing I'll point out is you cannot get the flu from the flu shot. So sometimes people think that that happens, and that is a myth. So we always want to make sure people know that.
Sam, it was really easy.
Commissioner's upper arm. Let's, I've had this lesson. That isn't going to work.
My muscles are so strong.
Oh yeah, right.
And once you get the flu shot, it takes about two weeks for it to take full effect. So hopefully you won't be exposed to the flu for a couple more weeks.
All right. Good thing I didn't eat much more of my cinnamon rolls this morning.
Thank God your T-shirt's clean, that's all I'm... Diana, if I could, while he's getting jabbed, what about, and I'm just hearing it, I've asked you this early, excuse me, the, the older dosage. And how do people ask for that? Is it always going to be available at any clinics? Nobody mentioned it a week ago when I did this one.
Yeah, that's a great question. So there is a high-dose flu shot for people 65 and older that has just more concentration of antigen than the regular dose. You should ask for that at your provider. Most providers carry it, some don't. If your provider doesn't carry it, you can always go to a pharmacy. Most pharmacies do carry it. So you probably, sometimes you have to ask for it, depends on your provider.
But if you had the regular dose, you should feel like you're, you're still covered, isn't that correct? You're not telling me I have to go again because I won't.
You do not have to go again, no.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much for coming and...
Tea comes to work late.
Torturing our... Our elected officials here.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I might?
And appointed, yes.
I'd like to thank Diana for coming out here. The Health Department really does a great job for our citizens of Marion County, and they need to know that they're out there trying to keep the community safe from disease. And one of those things is to help with getting people to get their flu shots, among other things. But they do a lot of work on communicable diseases, and it's an important part of what Marion County does for its citizens. Thank you, Diana.
Sam, can I borrow your earbrush now?
Yeah, it's, it's almost like brand new.
Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda, and I believe, is it Commissioner Cameron's turn to do it?
Yeah, it's been a month or so since I haven't been there.
All right. So we'll let you get...
Dressed?
Dressed, organized here, and then we'll...
I should have worn shorts and a T-shirt today. Well, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar before I get dressed. Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First, under Community Services, approve a grant agreement with Strategic Economic Development Corporation, SEDCOR, for $800,000 to fund business recruitment, retention, and expansion of activities within the county through June 30th, 2023. Approve a grant agreement with Travel Salem for $125,000 to fund business recruitment, retention, and expansion of activities with the county through June 30th, 2019. Under Juvenile, approve Amendment Number One with social finance to add $85,000 for equip program and extend the contract through November 30th, 2019. Under Public Works, approve purchase order contract with Sonray Machinery LLC for $199,532 to purchase a track excavator. Under Public Works, receive notice of hearings officer's recommendation and schedule a public hearing for October 24th, 2018 to consider Zone Change Comprehensive Plan, ZCCP, case number 18-001 PNP Properties LLC and McCallum Powder LLC, Clerk's File Number 5781.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve these items. Any discussion? Well, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, they are approved, thank you. We have two action items today, two public hearings, noticed at 9:30. The first action item is, receive and consider appeal of hearings officer's decision denying conditional use, 18-030 Lee, Clerk's File Number 5780. Joe Fenimore, you are here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a request for a conditional use to permit, to establish a bed and breakfast in as a home occupation on a 9.4 acre unit of land in a special agriculture zone. in as a home occupation on a 9.4 acre unit of land in a special agriculture zone located on Valentine Road South, Salem. On May 14, 2018, the Planning Director issued a decision approving the request subject to conditions. On May 23, that decision was appealed by property owners in the area that opposed the approval. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on the appeal on June 21, and left the record open until July 5, and on September 7 issued a decision denying the request. On September 24, that decision was appealed to the board. In the denial, the hearings officer found that two criteria were not satisfied. One of the criteria requires an applicant to demonstrate that the proposed use will not unreasonably interfere with other permitted uses in the zone in which the property is located. On this criterion is analyzed in Finding 16, beginning on page 10 of the decision. Hearings officer discusses the types of uses allowed in the SA zone and the potential impacts of proposed use, of the proposed use, and concludes that it's not clear that the proposal will not interfere with farm and forest practices and other uses in the zone. The other criteria is very similar, and requires a finding that the use will not force a significant change in or significantly increase the cost of accepted farm or forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm or forest use. This criterion is discussed in Finding 22 on page 12 of the decision. The hearings officer found the applicant did not provide information on the day-to-day operation of the business, and did not analyze whether the farm practices in the area would be impacted, and concluded that the burden of proof regarding this criterion was not met. In the appeal, the applicant states that the hearings officer did not base the denial on the impacts the proposed bed and breakfast would have on adjacent properties, but the theoretical impacts the adjacent properties would have on the bed and breakfast. The applicant argues that the finding that the proposal fails to meet the criteria are speculative and unsupported by fact. The applicant includes there is no evidence in the record that the bed and breakfast would negatively affect adjacent farm and forest practices. Regarding the concerns of the hearings officer that there is no evidence in the record detailing the applicant's day-to-day operation and specific farm uses, practices taking place in the app, in the area, applicant argues that neither of these are required by the code, but if the appeal is accepted, the applicant will present such evidence at a public hearing. The applicant's attorney agrees to extend the 150th day decision-making deadline if the appeal is accepted. The Board has the following options: Accept the appeal and remand the matter back to the hearings officer. Accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing. The suggested hearing date is October 17. Deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. Staff recommends Option 2, the Board accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing. The suggested hearing date of October 17. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Okay, so Joe, so why would you recommend going to the Board rather than remanding back to the hearings officer if it's simply a matter of adding some evidence that was left out for the hearings officer? Because it's not requiring an interpretation on our part, right? I mean, if the evidence were presented, then it would be possible to then have the other items met. So explain that to me.
All right, so the reason why is because of the amount of opposition. And if, if it goes back to the hearings officer, and the hearings officer approves it, it'll be appealed to the Board again, more than likely. So that was just the, the time, basically.
Okay, but in terms of having the ability to determine whether or not the evidence rises to the level that would be necessary in order to meet the code requirements, how technical is that?
In this instance, I don't think it's that technical.
Okay. So explain what, explain in your view what needs to be provided in order to meet the Marion County code requirements and the whatever other requirements are...
So my understanding from the hearings officer's decision is there was no discussion of the types of farm practices taking place in the area.
So there'd need to be some sort of an analysis...
Some sort of an analysis of what type, what...
Of what the adjacent parcels are doing in terms of farming.
Right. And then, how will this use, if it's approved, affect those, if at all? Generally, home occupations are very low intensity because they're, indoors a lot, basically. There's not a lot of outside activity with a home occupation. Those are the kind of things that the hearings officer wanted, was a better description of what activities would be taking place, and if there are farming and forest activities around the property taking place in the area, how will they be adversely affected?
So in other words, the issue about traffic, how many cars would be coming up and down on, in any given day or any given week, those types of discussions?
Correct, but that was, that was already discussed by the hearings officer.
Okay.
So the two issues you came up with was how, you know, how will it impact agriculture and forestry, forestry uses on the adjacent property and subject property?
Well, I'm thinking back to the Bymart Festival that we had where traffic, whether or not there were farm vehicles coming down the road or not, did make a difference. And I'm not sure, when I read the report, that that was actually part of the discussion.
I think that issue was brought up by the opponents at the hearing. It is discussed in hearings officer's report. I can't put my finger on it at this point.
Okay, all right. I'm just a little bit concerned about bringing it here, because there is so much opposition without having the hearings officer go through the evidence and then give her read on...
And that is an option to remand it.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Well, I, I do, and I've read it, so I can't find the, well, I shouldn't probably say this before hearing, but I don't find any objections. I can't find a big impact. So, so what, what are the couple of issues that really matter? It can't be just a few cars going up a driveway. I can't think of anything else that this would impact, but tell me I'm wrong.
I would have to let the applicant's representative tell you that.
Fine.
Well, can I just share my view on it? I think, I mean, this is the Morrow Mansion, right?
That is correct.
Right, so this is like a gigantic home. Nine bedrooms, 10 bathrooms, indoor swimming pool, gym. I've looked at the videos. In fact, I've got it up this morning. My daughter's been in there, so like she knew some people when she went to Sprague and went over there. It's a gorgeous, gorgeous home. So I think part of the issue is, and it's a legitimate issue, is that if there are parameters set, that it, I thought it was interesting that people could come and they could only sleep and have breakfast, but they couldn't use the pool. All right, well, who's, who's going to be checking to see if they don't use the pool? And, and if they can have only five people there at a time, how often are they going to have five people? And then the, it, the applicant said, well, there's just a small number of people. Does that mean that they're only going to open it up on weekends? Is it going to be every day? And I think those are the kinds of questions that, that perhaps need to be answered in order for us to understand exactly what the impact's going to be on the surrounding environment. And who's going to monitor that? Because we know that you're not going to go in and be the, the bed and breakfast police, right, Joe? You're not going to be knocking on the door trying to find out if on Thursday they had six people or not.
That is correct.
Right.
Well, Madam Chair, for me, I, yeah, I, I'm just looking for the opposition that you were talking about in the, in the, when I was reading it, I didn't see other than...
It's in the file.
The hearings office.
The...
Oh, in the...
Yeah, there's a list at the beginning, if you look, that has exhibits, five, six, seven, eight...
Right, gotta go back and look at all those.
Comments and opposition, comments and opposition, comments of concern.
All right.
There's like, I don't know, 10, 11 of them here from people that live nearby.
Okay.
Which we would need to review if we're going to have it.
Hearing.
A hearing here.
Okay. Okay, there, I see it.
Right. So, I don't know. I'm going to do it.
Madam Chair, if I could, and I, I heard, if I did hear you right, Joe, that it'd go to the hearings officer and probably come back to us anyway, and that was the time that you're talking about?
I would expect it would, but I can't guarantee you that.
All right. I'm, I'm going to make a motion. You can accept it if you want, of accepting the recommendation that we accept the appeal, schedule a public hearing on the suggested hearing date of October 17, 2018.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Well, my discussion is, this is a tough one for me, because again, I want to make sure, Joe, that you come prepared with a review of the evidence so that you can give a solid analysis to the Board about, because I don't want to just punt on this one, given, you see what I'm saying? Not that we punt ever, but you know what I'm saying. I don't want it to be just, I want it to be a, a full analysis of whether or not that information is adequate, all right, to meet the code, so that if there is further opposition, we can feel confident that the information that came before us either did or didn't meet those criteria.
All right, understood.
All right. So with that understanding, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Appeal is accepted to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let us go to the next item, which is consider approval of the annual recertification of Marion County's participation in the community, community rating system of FEMA, which stands for the Federal Emergency Management Agency? Is that what it stands for?
If we stall long enough, we'll hear them on our phones.
Yeah, we're going to get that message. That'll be inspiring.
That's true. Is it 11:20 something? That's supposed to be... So Brandon, you've got a PowerPoint presentation?
I am. I'm having a moment of technical difficulty. I guess I ought to make play.
All right, don't, don't rush. We're, we're all good.
Okay. Sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Today, I'm bringing to you the annual recertification for the county's participation in the community rating system of FEMA. So Marion County participates in the CRS, which is a, a program of the Federal Emergency Management Administration. It's part of the National Flood Insurance Program. It's a means for residents in Marion County to save money on their insurance premiums by the county's participation in the community rating system. Across the nation, around 10% of jurisdictions participate in the CRS. And then Marion County's rating of six is one of the highest in the CRS. Around, less than 10% of communities achieve a class six or higher rating. And so we're, Marion County's in around the top 1% of nations, of jurisdictions nationwide on insurance savings. Being in a class six community means that residents receive a 20% reduction in their flood insurance premiums. People who are outside a flood plain, mapped flood plain can still get flood insurance. Those areas still do flood. Not every, every area that floods is mapped, and they receive a 10% discount. So in Marion County, there are over $70 million of insured structures and contents, and the savings every year is over $53,000 for county residents off their insurance premiums. The average savings is $160 per flood plain policy. So just really quickly, I wanted to highlight the way the savings are uniquely displayed in Marion County. The state has a minimum elevation when you build a new home to one foot above the base flood elevation. And a newer home built that way to current standards, you might pay 600 a year for a flood insurance premium. Because Marion County requires a minimum of two feet in order to better ensure people are outside flood plains when it floods, and to minimize the damage further, automatically people have a savings of $200 approximately off that, a third of the cost upfront. And then the CRS discount for the community's participation is another 20%. So premiums in Marion County can be almost half of what they would be in another jurisdiction in Oregon, just because of the, the additional elevation that homes get and the CRS participation by the county. So to achieve these savings related to the CRS, FEMA looks at a lot of activities that, that the county does. It's important when you have, when you think about flood insurance, is to realize that standard homeowners' policies don't cover flood damage, and that federal grants and loans are not available after every flood event. There's many flood events where people get flooded, and there's no grant or loan available, and they're dependent on the flood insurance to recover. And even a few inches of water can damage the home in a very expensive way. The water can wake up the walls and cause a lot of damage to the contents. Flood insurance is required if you have a federally backed home loan. The CRS looks at a lot of different activities across the county. So the county does things that we feel as a county are right for our community, and then CRS awards points for those, depending upon how they think it'll impact the insurance, the future insurance costs. So look at the way we keep our drainage ways open, having an emergency operations plan and a hazards plan, our building code level and the way we enforce our flood plain ordinance, keeping, keeping items out of streams and not dumping, dumping pesticides and chemicals into streams, controlling erosion, sedimentation, and the kind of outreach activities we do. All of that contributes to a very large comprehensive review of the county's participation in CRS. So if people have more questions about the CRS or about building in a flood plain, I'd certainly encourage them to contact me or contact the Planning Department. We're happy to answer those questions. And with that information, every year, the CRS requires the county verify we are still doing the activities that allow us to participate in the program. Before the Board today is the annual recertification package for the Board. Staff has worked with departments in the county to verify the information being submitted with the packet is correct, and staff recommends the Board sign the verification package as provided. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
So what's our discount again?
Our discount is 20% in flood plains and 10% in outside of a mapped flood plain.
That's really good. We've real, where did we, we were much lower than that when I started here, right?
We, we started at...
Like 10, like, tell us what we were at, like 10, 15 years ago.
We started, we entered the program at 10%, 10%, and then went to 15, and then went to 20.
Uh huh.
And it's very, it's very rigorous. It's definitely one of those curves that kind of shoots straight up as you try to achieve more and more.
Right.
Highest communities tend to be up in Florida, where they have a lot of repetitive loss properties and do a lot of activity to move, relocate homes, and up in the Puget Sound area, where they have a lot of storm drainage maintenance and natural functions that they maintain for fish habitat and such. Those are, tend to be the highest communities across the nation, and there's only a handful.
And then, insurance companies know that we offer this so that if people are looking for flood insurance, they automatically get that discount, right?
Absolutely.
You don't have to, you don't have to go out and have seen your PowerPoint and say, hey, can I have my 20%?
Absolutely not. It's, it's, it's very automatic. It's tied into the community number. When they submit for a quote, they have to provide the community number as well as the map and panel, and the discount automatically is there.
Well, I remember when, it wasn't you, but the first person that came up and said, well, we're at 10%, and I said, well, what would it take to get higher? And they're like, oh, it'd be really hard. It would be a whole lot of work. And, well, let's do it. Let's see if we can. So I'm really impressed and very proud of the work that you've done on this program. I think it's really...
We've been in the program since 1999.
Very good.
And so we're, we're working pretty hard right now to maintain where we're at, because there's some changes in the program. The way they attribute points is almost like on a curve when you grade.
Yeah.
And so we do things that are right for our community and that look great, but sometimes the things that we do, maybe they don't apply to all the rural land like they might in some other jurisdictions. It's affected by flooding a lot, so we get a reduction in points. Or our growth rate is lower than maybe an area that's growing really fast, and so we get 10% instead of a 30 or 50% increase in points. So all those things, things that we have no control over sometimes, have a big impact on our, on our score. But they do work with us hard to, they work with us very hard to maintain, to, to, to maintain it, to achieve what we've got and to maintain it. Some communities have actually left the CRS in, in Oregon because of the, the time, the timeframe, the amount of, the time commitment that, that is required.
Ms. Chair.
Wait, yeah, Brandon, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Brandon, I think, was it last year or the year before, we were talking about how expensive the flood insurance has become, and the rating that they do it throughout the whole country versus by region, et cetera. Is that still, has that changed at all? I remember I had a meeting with Congressman Schrader out in Turner about this issue. Where, where are we with how they grade it?
I haven't, I haven't heard that there's any changes in the works. The notion is maybe that there's, there's 10 or 11 different FEMA regions, and maybe the flooding they have in other areas of the country, it's more frequent, or the amount of damage that they experience is more costly, but the premiums are nationwide. So the question is, I don't know if they've investigated to what degree, if we had premiums just set for our region, the Northwest, would they be a different amount than if they were just based on a nationwide premium?
Yeah, so we don't know that that's making any progress yet.
We don't know.
Right. Thank you.
Well, I'm thinking I don't know facts, but that's pretty easy for me to do. But I know the rates have gone up a whole bunch. And the one I, what I want to comment on is so that discount has got more valuable over time. It may not sound like a good deal, but as that premium goes up, it does matter. So I'm happy we're maintaining that.
20%, 20% of a double premium is a lot more.
I mean, this is work that we do that directly impacts the pocketbooks of people that are living in flooded areas.
Right.
So I think it's just worth the time that we spend on it to get the maximum that we can, given that it's not a perfect point system. Dex is kind of stacked against us from time to time, but still, we, we're doing great. I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an annual recertification of Marion County's participation in the community rating system of FEMA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this annual recertification. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that motion is approved. Thank you, Brandon. So now we will move into our two public hearings. The first one's under Public Works, so Brandon's just moving to a different seat.
No.
This is a public hearing to consider City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. And Brandon, go ahead and... And Brandon, go ahead and present this item to us.
Good morning Commissioners, again for the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. I have with me today Lisa Brosnan, who is a planner with Mid-Blame Valley Council of Governments, who is a planner for Sublimity, and she may have some comments to share about this before the board. On May twentieth, on May fourteenth this year, the City of Sublimity held a first reading on an ordinance whose final reading will approve amending the city's urban growth boundary to add ten point three four acres of land, nine point five nine acres for public use for a city park and maintenance yard and zero point seven five acres for residential use for an existing residence that's being brought in as part of the parcel. The city has requested the county concur in the UGB amendment. On August twenty-ninth, the board approved a resolution initiating amendments to the county comprehensive plan to consider concurring in the Sublimity amendments and scheduled a hearing for today. In twenty seventeen, the City of Sublimity prepared and adopted a parks plan for the city based on a twenty-year population projection provided by Portland State University's Population Research Center. The city identified a year twenty thirty-seven deficit in parkland, thirty acres. The city went through the process in statute and Goal fourteen as well as worked with property owners bordering on the existing city limits to identify additional potential land that could be brought into the city to meet its parkland need. The city identified ten acres of land to the northeast of the existing city limits. Six point five acres of the land would meet a portion of the parkland need for the city. Approximately three acres would be used by the city for a public works maintenance area and less than an acre for the existing home site. The city determined that the land would efficiently accommodate the needed park and the proposed expansion would allow for the orderly and economic provision of public facilities and services. The city also determined that comparatively, the site would have a more favorable possible impact on any environmental, energy, economic, and social consequence than other properties with positive social consequences anticipated when the land is, serves as a community park for the city. Lastly, the city determined that the low intensity use of the property as a park, maintenance facility, and single-family residence would not negatively impact nearby agricultural uses. Upon approval of the urban growth boundary, the city will annex the land into the city limits and zone the land with the city urban zone designation of public and low-density residential. Because the land will be annexed upon, being included in the urban growth boundary, the county will not have to apply an interim zoning designation to the property like we often do. Staff recommends that the board concur in the City of Sublimity Comprehensive Urban Growth Boundary Amendment and direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving the amendments to the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting the amendments to the City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary of ten acres for public land for a city park and maintenance yard and residential land for an existing dwelling. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
When you say the existing home site, there's a home on the parcel right now and so it's just going to have a smaller footprint, is that what you think?
There's a home, it's near the city limits and they're bringing the entire parcel.
And it'll become part of the city then?
Yes.
Any questions, Brandon? We don't have anyone signed up, do you want to come up, Karen?
I would like to hear if any, if there's any opposition, I don't see anything and I frankly.
Good morning, my name is Lisa Brosnan. I'm a planner with the Mid-Blame Valley Council of Governments, working with the City of Sublimity. Just about two years ago, in November of twenty sixteen, the city held a public meeting, an open forum for citizens, which attracted a packed house in the city council chambers. And for this meeting, they were talking about the future direction of the city and, and the concerns of the citizens. And overwhelmingly, the citizens told us that they wanted more parkland. The city, the manager had asked me after that meeting to start a study and develop a master plan for parks for the city. And what we found is that based on population projections to the year twenty thirty-seven, we had a deficit of about thirty acres. And this is based on national standards for parkland, which is nine point six acres per thousand residents. The city only has two point two acres of parklands that they actually own. They have some other areas that they lease. And they've always had trouble justifying investment in these parks when they didn't own the property. So back in, after the study was done, we had gone through procedures to determine the best area to have a park and we, they did locate a property in the northeast section, right outside city limits. This is approximately ten-acre parcel that would include six point five acres for a park, this small point seven five acre for existing residents, and then about three acres for a city maintenance facilities and probably the parking area for the park. The city has voted to approve this annexation and UGB amendment. That was back in February of this year. They held a first reading of the ordinance in May and they did make the findings based on the Oregon statewide planning goals and guidelines, particularly Goal Eight for recreation needs, Goal Eleven for public facilities, and Goal Fourteen for urbanization. So on behalf of the citizens of the City of Sublimity, we appreciate your consideration in this matter and I am here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, questions?
Just the one I tried to ask, I don't see, is there any opposition, nobody's signed up to speak that I can see and it's all positive.
Generally, people were very supportive of this throughout the process. We did have concerns here and there that we were able to work with and one of the things that did come up from the public was that they wanted to have a committee appointed, a Parks Committee that would be appointed by the city council to determine how best to develop this land.
You could serve on that. He's a Sublimity resident. All right, any other questions? Brandon, anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, so we had a, we opened the public hearing and so we'll need a motion to close the public hearing and then to take action.
Madam Chair, I will make that motion and I'll find the recommendation back at the top of this right up.
I'll second.
Well, let me say it correctly.
He's working on it.
Trying to get there, I saw it as to close the public hearing and concur in the City of Sublimity's Urban Growth Boundary Amendment, directing staff to return with an ordinance consistent with the board's decision. That's the motion.
I'll, I'll second that one too.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is that good? Motion? Jane and Brandon? All right, great. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you, great work. One last public hearing that we will open, we are now putting on our hat is the Contract Review Board and this is a public hearing to consider allowing business services the use of a competitive design-build solicitation as an alternative competitive, complete, I think it's supposed to be competitive process, for a public improvement contract for Courthouse Square Fire Alarm System Upgrade. So my recollection is that you came and said, could we use an alternative process? And now we're actually doing the alternative process, is that where we're at?
This is for you to approve us to do the alternative.
Okay, so we haven't done this one yet.
No, so the first one was to schedule a public hearing.
Got it, so this was the public hearing, all right.
Yeah.
So that's today, okay, now I know what we're doing, thank you. So we have, who's going to go first, Camber, Colleen? Camber?
Yeah. Commissioners, do you mind if I just confirm that we have opened as the Contract Review Board?
We have, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, my name is Camber Schlag. I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
Colleen Kuntchafens, Business Services Director.
Kevin Burton, Construction Project Coordinator for the county.
And we are before you this morning to seek approval to use an exemption for a alternative contracting method when it comes to public improvement. We are looking at issuing a design-build RFP and I am going to turn it over to Kevin right now to give a description of the project.
So Courthouse Square does not have alarms, flashing lights, or strobes to warn people in a fire emergency. That's relied on paging system through the building and personal contact so that a person has to actually physically page people to get out of the building. We'd rather have that be an immediate alarm system so that everybody on every floor knows immediately that we need to evacuate. That way, nobody's left behind trying to warn people to get out. We decided to go with the design-build process because it cuts down on design time. It's a very specialized field where most of it is all design-build in major contracts anyway. As an example, our public safety building was a design-build fire safety system and that's the way most of big projects have their fire safety systems. So it makes more sense to just have that design-build now rather than to pay an engineer to design a system and then have a contractor do it and the engineers are not really familiar with the fire alarm systems like the professionals that do that day in, day out. So it'd be a savings for the county, it also allows them to go through the process quicker and actually start before design is complete. They can design on the fly, as they say. In a design-build situation, a lot of times, construction can actually start somewhere around thirty percent design process. I'm available for any questions.
I think we had this conversation when we were scheduling the public hearing, I remembered the topic, I just couldn't remember what we were doing with it. And we, it kind of all came around to Sam, I think he wasn't here, Commissioner Brentano, when we scheduled this public hearing.
So am medicine, right?
Well, no, so the, so the whole deal is that you're getting replaced by a machine.
Oh, I get you.
Right.
Well, that'd, that'd make good sense.
Right, yeah. And we all went, yeah, that makes total sense. It's good.
No, we, we did discuss this quite a bit.
Right.
On why we're doing it.
Okay, so there's no one signed up at the public hearing, is there anything that you all want to add?
I just wanted to include that the total project budget is anticipated to be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In your packets today, you do have the findings for exemption that we have provided that basically indicate why the design-build is a successful project method to, to do for this project.
So it's not going to limit competition, it's not, it's going to be a more efficient process for the county?
Yeah.
Save money, not spend more money, all of the things that you generally put into those findings.
Yes, and they will also be notified of our timeline that we do have because Courthouse Square obviously is a functioning building. We are not planning on, you know, moving people out, doing any shuffling, so they will be working around the business as usual.
And what's, what's the timeframe in getting this done? I mean, when do we anticipate it will actually be in?
I'm not actually the project lead on this, so I didn't set the calendar. That would be Larry Tilford, his fill-in as he's at the IFMA International Sales Management Association this week.
You think it's this year, like by Christmas?
Yeah, our anticipation is to, once the RFP goes through thirty to sixty-day process, then they can start their design process and within thirty percent, be able to start doing some work.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the goal is to have it completed by this fiscal year, so it will be done. I will note that we did have one phone call, just checking in to see what this was about from a pub, they didn't show up for public hearing, but Kevin did take a phone call more about the scope of the project than anything else, so it wasn't a protest, it was just a question.
Was it someone that does that kind of work in the community that wanted to know why we weren't admitting it out?
Yes. And, you know, the only other thing I would mention is, it's really risk. I mean, this is where we're putting the risk on the design-build side of it. For this type of system, because it is a fire life safety issue, we're putting the risk more on the contractor, the design-build function of that is to put the risk there so that if something is missed in that, then they're going to be accountable for that.
Jane?
Oh, I was just going to comment on the timeline. My office has already reviewed the request for proposal, so it's probably ready to go out once the board approves, or if the board approves.
All right, so it should be in short order. Very good.
Good, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's important to know that this is, both the county and the Transit District will participate in this and the condo board has approved going ahead with it.
So I need a motion?
We do need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the proposed exemption to Marion County Public Contracting Rules for consideration of an alternative solicitation process for Courthouse Square Fire Alarm System Upgrade Project.
And you're closing the public hearing, right?
Oh. Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve a proposed exemption on the Marion County Public Contracting Rules for consideration of an alternative solicitation process for Courthouse Square Fire Alarm System Upgrade Project.
Do you want to say it again, or is that enough?
Did I do it right that time?
Yeah, you did do it right.
Were you awake by October and tell me when you need me?
Did I get it, can I get a perfected, perfection second?
Your time would really be the charm. We have a second to the motion.
Maybe.
I, I will second.
All right, we have a motion, a perfect motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, thank you. Well, I've never got that from my other commissioner.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you, thank you. All right, that concludes our agenda today. I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present between October third, twenty eighteen, and October tenth. We're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square at noon today. October third is our monthly Woodburn Marion County Meeting held at Luis's Taqueria, five twenty-three Front Street in Woodburn. Then at two o'clock this afternoon to four thirty is a Marion County Advisory Board Training right here in the Senator Hearing Room. We have, I think, more than twenty people signed up for it, so we're very excited about that. Mostly staff, but we have a few volunteer members and we're going to talk about ethics and public meetings laws and how to get your board so that they really feel like they're doing meaningful work and so it's going to be a great opportunity for us to do. Five thirty this afternoon, this evening, is the Marion County Fair Board Meeting up in the Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, Thursday, at nine thirty is our monthly Department Head-Elected Officials Meeting, also in the Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. At noon tomorrow, Thursday, will be a Marion County Reentry Initiative Planning Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room. Then at two o'clock is an executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two six sixty-two D. Do we know what D is? Jane?
Oh, that's labor.
Labor negotiations, thank you. Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. Friday from ten to two, this is October fifth, is our annual district meeting. We have them at the AOC Conference, it's really not quite annual, we only have one where we meet just as a district here. In our area, it will be held at the Local Government Center, twelve oh-one Court Street Northeast in Salem. Monday, October eighth, at eight AM, starts the meetings of the Association of Oregon County Steering Committees, followed by their Legislative Committee, followed by the board meeting. It's also held at the Local Government Center on Court Street in Salem. Tuesday, October ninth, seven thirty in the morning, is our State and Marion County Meeting, monthly meeting at the Covered Bridge Cafe, five ten North Third Avenue in Staton. Then that will be followed at nine with our calendar review up in the fifth floor of Courthouse Square in the Silverton Conference Room. At nine thirty, Tuesday, October ninth, is a work session on contracts and procurement rules. That thing has been moved at least five times. So we'll see if this one sticks, it's in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. Eleven thirty, a Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. And then Tuesday, October ninth, from five to six, is going to be our Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council. This one is going to be held at Shemecata Community College, Building Two, Room one seventy-nine. And it will be followed at six thirty by an East Salem Town Hall Meeting, which we're very excited about, in the same building, in the same room, out at Shemecata Community College. And if people are listening, we want to invite everybody who's interested in East Salem, particularly issues facing the unincorporated areas of East Salem, to join us at Shemecata Community College. We'll have the sheriff there, we'll have a number of people from different county departments talking about lighting, sewers, parks, traffic, law enforcement, dogs, we had a dog. So we've got a lot of different topics that we have people on deck to answer questions and hear people's issues and try to problem solve. Then a week from today, Wednesday, October tenth, at nine o'clock, we'll be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. And then at three o'clock will be the ribbon cutting at Butteville Landing, and that's at Butteville Landing in, on Butteville Road in Butteville, Oregon.
In beautiful Butte.
I wouldn't even want to try that. And that is our calendar. So anything else that anyone wants to talk about? I missed the Aurora Airport discussion at Management Update, is there anything you want to say about that? I was looking at the agenda last night because I was gone on Monday, so. I was looking at the agenda last night because I was gone on Mondays. Is it, is it, is there a discussion ongoing? Are there meetings? Just kind of what's the process?
Yeah, so, the issue was the grant. There's a lot of confusion.
Oh, you went to the E-Board.
Yeah, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and in fact, I just got an email, I think I copied Jane in on my response, about we're going Thursday night to the City of Aurora to talk about our intergovernmental agreement with the City of Aurora. People are thinking that's about the airport, it's not about the airport. What happened about, on Monday, pretty much, was a discussion, a follow-up on E-Board. E-Board basically sets, deferred their decision until, on the grant that...
For extension of the runway.
For, the grant for, yeah, $37 million, 100 percent grant money, no match, that Oregon Department of Aviation filed, by the way, without ever talking to us, but it's their opportunity to do that. They filed for this grant, and of course, there's all kinds of misinformation out there about what that is and the process. So, the E-Board deferred until December and sent us to Oregon Solutions.
Oh, so we're in mediation or something? Or what does that mean?
Well, it's interesting. They've, they've sent us to Oregon Solutions, which has nothing to do with whether the grant is going to be, it's to try, how do I say this? Senator Johnson said to tone down the rhetoric, and she actually said, and, and she called out some people.
Some people from Marion County?
Some people.
Some people not from Marion County?
Other counties, and one person from Marion County, who lives in Marion County, but represents those other people. So, she kind of called them out, and then, and then, when it got to the full E-Board...
Beautiful Butteville.
When it got to the full E-Board, basically, we ended up with five or six senators that voted no on the deferral because, and, because they realized that this was more about politics than about the reality and practicality. So, it will come back in December. Hopefully, between now and then, we will not get the grant awarded too soon because the federal government doesn't move that fast. And then, in December, there should be something, and I'm not sure what Senator Johnson wants to accomplish through business solutions, Oregon Solutions, but this is the first time I know that people are being sent to Oregon Solutions without anything to talk about. There is no grant. It's, it's to try to tone down the rhetoric. And then, at the end of the meeting, Senator Courtney finally spoke up, and he said, yeah, we just need, you know, this is a hot potato, we need to have everybody at the table, and, and we do need to tone down the rhetoric on both sides. And what, that kind of offended me because we're, we're not...
There's no rhetoric.
There's no rhetoric, we're just talking facts. We're just talking about the fact that there is a master plan at that airport, it has been adopted by the FAA. I mean, everything is there. The rhetoric is coming from those who oppose it, and they're making up all kinds of stories. So...
If I could interrupt, so what is Oregon Solutions going to do except trying to make us agree to...
I don't know, Carmen Ford...
...subordinate our responsibilities? That's how I'd say it.
I, I don't know what the plan is, and, you know, who is going to get picked to represent the airport or Marion County? I mean, we, we know that this is a, that the Oregon Department of Aviation now actually controls the whole process if this grant comes forward, not us. And we would have a land use...
Right.
...decision or issue potentially.
And that's where I'm saying that my position is, why would Oregon want to compromise its land use standards? They're not doing it at the legislature. Are they asking us to do something outside of what the law allows in terms of jurisdiction?
I think this was just a, it's, it's delaying this issue until December. My hope is that when we come back to the E-Board in December, we can say, hey, we participated in this process. We haven't, you know, ramped up any rhetoric, we're just waiting for this grant to be accepted. And there's a, and this was what I wrote back to this gentleman the other day, there's a five-year process if this grant comes through, that everybody would have input and have their chance. And, you know, at the E-Board, the chair from Clackamas County said that, that they were noticed, like, and got noticed a day before, the night before, with these hearings on the master plan, and, and they were...
It's like what people were speaking things through.
Yeah, that they're, that they went to these things, but the decision was still made not in their favor. Well, I mean, not everybody wins on these issues, so... And then, the other thing, is I don't know where Salem's going to be on this, but I testified next to the mayor, and the question was asked of the mayor, does the success of one airport neglect the success of the other? Salem versus Aurora? And the answer is no. And his answer was no, meaning if Salem is successful, Aurora can be successful. We both can be successful, and I made the point in testimony that both these airports are in Marion County. So, any development, development in Salem helps economic development and helps the citizens of Salem, as well as Aurora helps not only Marion County, but helps take some pressure off of Metro and the Portland Airport on commercial, not, not commercial air traffic, but on business air traffic. So, that was, that was the discussion. And then, there was a little bit about our, Jane and I are going Thursday night to the City of Aurora. They put it, I don't even think they talked to us before, they just put it on their agenda that they wanted to have us a joint, they're having a joint planning and council meeting to talk about our intergovernmental agreement. So, we're going to go and listen to what they have to say.
Okay.
Right? Do you want to add to that?
Well, I was just going to say, I have a feeling it's going to, it's going to involve more about building permits, just from some emails that I've seen, notice on building that's going on outside the UGA. That would be my guess.
Alright, well, glad I asked.
So, if that's the case, what we have is an attempt from all kinds of jurisdictions to control what we have jurisdiction over. They want to take over, and, don't get me started.
And vote no, let's be serious.
Right. Okay, well, I think we're at the end of our meeting.
End of the rope.
Alright, thanks, everyone, for listening, and we will adjourn.